It is seven o'clock and I will call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hold to Order. Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All present and accounted for. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved?
Second.
It was moved by Jaya and seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any substantial corrections? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Okay, tho- those are passed as stand. Next item is additions to the agenda. Are there any? Yes, Chris?
I just had a quick question. Is the use of force presentation by the Police Department going to be rescheduled?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next item is presentations and public input. There are no presentations. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to the Committee of the Ho. Okay, with none, next item is staff reports.
I did want to take a minute. Didn't have a chance last week, but I wanted to publicly thank and acknowledge the efforts of the Urbana Police Department, particularly the leadership team of the department over the past fifteen months while we engaged in a search for our new chief. And I want to particularly thank our interim deputy chief, Matt Bain, our interim chief of police, Rich Surles, and the leadership team, including the lieutenants. Interim Chief Bain and Chief Surles during this time completed the update and revision of about a hundred sixty policies in the department. They oversaw the renovation of the police services area. You're seeing the results of that in the lobby now. That includes the lobby, the police services area, the investigations division. There are security enhancements as well. All of this for better service to the public, more privacy for people seeking assistance at the department, and safety for both the public and our city employees. They also initiated the community safety review, which was a high priority of this council with Barry Dunn. They completed training, the active bystandership for law enforcement, able training, and de-escalation training, which reflects our commitment to the ten shared principles. They were very actively supporting, in many ways, the search for our new chief of police. They were actively involved in recruiting and retention of officers, and many of those off- new officers are currently in training. So I really appreciate the fact that they advanced the goals of the department, the city, and the city council. And I also want to highlight the fact that Matt Bain, as interim police chief, also completed coursework for the Northwestern University School of Police Staff in Command. And all that was done while overseeing the general operations and logistics of this department. And the next level of leadership doesn't always get public attention, so I also wanted to thank them tonight. And that includes the lieutenants who operate, who really run the, who run the department on a day-to-day basis as well. Those include Lieutenant Dave Smizer as a patrol lieutenant. He's also, in addition to all the duties related to that, he focuses on technology and updating and dealing with the vehicles and the fleet. And it's a lot more complicated than it might seem because we don't just buy cars for the police department. They have to be equipped with the computers and all the other technology that you need to do your job as an officer on the streets today. Corey Coker is also serves as a patrol lieutenant. In addition to his regular duties, supporting the officers who are on the street twenty-four-seven, he assists with the enforcement of the, our state and local liquor code. And the deputy local liquor commissioner and I really call on him quite frequently to assist in various aspects of that. He deals with nuisance property issues, and he coordinated the crisis co-responder team. Lieutenant Mike Cervantes in Investigations, he helps coordinate the work of the detectives, one who investigate crimes, develop evidence, prepare for trial, and really seek the justice that victims of crime in our community deserve. And then finally, Lieutenant Zach Mikulik in our Police Services Division. He, which is the division that you, when people come to the window, and this lobby is constantly there are people walking into the lobby, asking for help, following up on problems that they have. But our Police Services Team, Zach oversees that. He also assists with enforce expungements, with archiving. In the renovation of the Police Department has also involved going through lots of paper, figuring out what we need to keep, what we can safely dispose of. And he did all of this during a massive remodeling project. So again, and then finally, a sincere thanks to the women and men of the Urbana Police Department. I appreciate the warm welcome that they've extended to Chief Larry Boone. And I'm told Chief Boone now cannot walk into either Walmart or Starbucks without being recognized. And that's after being on the job for less than, actually exactly one week. So I'd say, welcome to Urbana. And one more bit of good news is that I, today, the Police Services Supervisor, Dr. LaShonda Cunningham, was honored with a certificate that was issued by the Illinois General Assembly, House of Representatives. So today Representative Carol Ammons was here in this chamber, and she presented LaShonda with the Backbone of the Black Home Award. And it's in recognition of the many ways LaShonda serves the community, including, of course, we all, she's famous for her organization of the annual Jetty Roads Day in June, but she does many other things as well. So she was recognized for the many things she does in our community. So again, thank you all. And I wish I had said that last week, but I didn't, but I'm putting it on the record tonight. Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you for the report, Mayor. I was wondering if at some point we could have an update and probably presentation about what policies were updated and how so?
Sure. Be up to the chief. Next will-
And I would say that's an internal, that is an internal function.
Okay. Next item is new business. First is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two four, an ordinance vacating an alley between seven fourteen and eight oh two Wabash Avenue.
Good evening, Council. I have a few items for you tonight. Couple of alley vacations I'll start off with first. Okay. All right, so this one is an alley on Wabash Avenue. And coming across, all right, here we go. So what we're coming to you tonight with is a request to pass an ordinance to vacate a twelve-foot wide east-west alley, which runs along the entirety of the south side of seven fourteen Wabash Avenue. And you'll see this will be really clear on the map when I pull it up next. The alley is unmaintained and currently solely used as a driveway backyard by the seven fourteen Wabash Avenue residents. So our proposal is that the alley should be vacated solely to the owner of the seven fourteen Wabash Avenue property because the alley is completely within the subdivision to the north, meaning it was never a part of the other, the adjacent property to the south. And so looking at this map image here, the yellow kind of hatched area is the alley that we were looking to vacate. And if you look to the property to the east, you'll see the property line is completely south of this yellow hatched area. The pink area is just, as for reference, is another alley that was vacated previously. And sorry for some bearing, I should say. This is where Wabash Avenue is a little bit north of Washington Street, and you can see Cottage Grove just to the east there where Philo Road and Cottage Grove merged together. So here are a couple photos to give us some context. It's essentially a driveway. It just happened to be owned by the city up until potentially this month. So this is us looking at the alley from Wabash Avenue. Yep, just being used by that one property to the north. So of course, the benefit of this is removing the maintenance obligations from the city for this, which is, really has a single property use. And that's why we're bringing this to you tonight. Any questions?
Sharice?
This particular alley that's becoming a, has become a driveway. The residents at that home already regard it as like a driveway, or?
It's how it's used.
So my question is, are they going to be us vacating that, that particular alleyway? Are we giving them that land?
Essentially, yes. Yeah. We're vacating it, and it is being transferred to them for ownership.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
I know I ask this every time, but we do this about once a year. So this means that, once this is, if this is approved and vacated, then it goes to the recorder slash, whoever's taking the recorder now, clerk, thank you, the clerk's office, and they update the plat, and then that changes, technically it changes what they're paying property tax on, right?
Yes.
But the amount of money is negligible, usually. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the next steps. I appreciate the historical documents that you have in here. A little tricky to read, but thank you for that.
I'll pass it along. Dan is a, Dan is a wealth of knowledge. Our surveyor, yep.
Are there any more questions for John? Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will move ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three zero eight zero two four, an ordinance vacating an alley between seven fourteen and eight oh two Wabash Avenue to the consent agenda, the next city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. That ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two four, an ordinance vacating an alley between seven fourteen and eight oh two Wabash Avenue, be moved on to city council for approval on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that item was passed unanimously. Next item is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two five, an ordinance vacating an alley within Victory Park.
Okay, similar drill here, different reasons, different parties involved. So asking for council to pass an ordinance to vacate a couple of strips of land, a fourteen-foot wide north-south public right-of-way, which is labeled Grossbach Drive, goes from Main Street south into Victory Park. And also a twelve-foot wide east-west alley that's located in kind of in the northeast corner of the park, and it's fully within the park's boundaries. So the same thing here, so Victory Park, you know, located between Main Street and Green Street, a little bit west of Cottage Grove Avenue. This Grossbach Drive and this little segment of an alley to the northeast, these parts are completely within the Urbana Park District boundaries. Grossbach Drive is just used by patrons of the park, the park district staff. The east-west alley is an unpaved, unused area. You wouldn't be able to know, you wouldn't know it was an alley if you weren't a surveyor. So looking at the image here, yeah, again, the yellow hatched areas are the alleys that we are proposing to vacate within, and they all be transferred to the park district and become part of Victory Park property. Here's a, kind of looking at Grossbach Drive, we're looking at the south end, looking south on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, we're looking north towards Main Street. And then there's the north end, it goes Grossbach Drive, looking south from Main Street. On the right is the little strip of alley that's currently just turf over there. And here's another couple of views of that short length, kind of in the east end of the park boundary, which is approximately where the sidewalk is, is the east end of the park boundary, looking into the park and then looking out of the park, where there's still an alley east of the park, as you can see, beyond those little posts there. Same idea, really just kind of transferring ownership to, you know, the party that's using it, the park district, taking it off our books. Okay.
Yes, James?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm looking at a map of that drive. It looks like there's a house just to the west of it, and that there's parking maybe behind that house.
Let's see, just, are you talking about the-
Maybe my map's out of date.
Grossbach Drive?
I'm looking at Google Maps.
Gotcha. I don't believe so, but I, honestly, I couldn't-
So we're abandoning it all the way to Main Street?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And so if the map that I have, maybe this house has been torn down? It has, okay. So that property is part of the park now?
All of the property that's shown in blue on the slide that John has up as the park district acquired properties, they demolished the houses.
Well, that would answer the question then, because they're not there. Never mind. Thank you.
Grace?
And are we transferring this ownership to the park district?
Yes.
Is that in here, or this is just for vacating?
By vacating the, what goes with the ordinance is like, who we're vacating it to, and the park district is the one receiving the property in this case?
Okay, I didn't find that in the ordinance besides the heading, like besides the title. I didn't see that it says we're transferring it to the park district, but I don't know if that's typical, that this is just mostly the vacation and then it will go to them?
Let me see. Can I open it up real quick?
John, if you're looking at it, and to Councilman Wilkin's point, if you look at Section Three of the ordinance, it talks about the PIN numbers that this, these, this vacant right-of-way is going to become associated with. And that's the part that the county actually needs to make sure that they associate the vacated areas to the right parcels, because they go to the parcel numbers. So you're right, it doesn't suggest in there who actually owns all of these PIN numbers that are going to it. So I suppose if there needs to be a clarification, they can do that. But that's the important piece, to make sure we know which parcel numbers they're actually going to.
Thank you. And so those are all related to the park district? It's just in PIN number code?
Correct, yeah. Thank you, Dave.
Any more questions for John on this ordinance? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make another consent agenda motion.
All right.
All right, I move ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three zero eight zero two five, an ordinance vacating an alley within Victory Park to the consent agenda on the next city council agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. That ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two five, an ordinance vacating an alley within Victory Park, moves on to city council for approval on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two six, an ordinance amending Schedule M of the section, of Section twenty-three dash one nine zero of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, tow-away zones at Green Street from Wright Street to Lincoln Avenue. And the John Show continues.
All right. Okay, so this one, yes, name of the game is tow-away zones on Green Street from Wright to Lincoln. And get into this a little bit. Picture, again, a picture will be worth a thousand words on this, but I'll start with a thousand words. So action request is to pass an ordinance to make both sides of Green Street from Wright to Lincoln a tow-away zone, no parking, with ability to enforce a tow-away zone, essentially. So the issue at hand is that parked vehicles occasionally obstruct bike lanes, which forces cyclists to merge with vehicle traffic. Also, the bike lane pavement in this section of Green Street was not designed for vehicular traffic. And this is an ordinance brought forward by the Traffic Commission, originally initiated by BPAC. And so showing a map here, the map shows Green Street from Wright to Lincoln, the upper half shows from Wright to Goodwin, the lower half shows from Goodwin to Lincoln. And if you're familiar with Green Street in this corridor, this course was famously called MCOR, Phase One. And we have two, two driving lanes, one in each direction, a center turn lane, kind of two-way left turn lane, and we have a bike lane on each side of the road as well. Of course, where the bus stops come in, there's different turn-offs for the buses to get them out of through traffic. But there really is no on-street parking setup in this part of Green Street. What issue comes at hand is that the bike lanes come up against the, the driving lane at times, and so people will park there. Typically, what I've heard this reported as is being maybe delivery vehicles, or perhaps even, you know, a passenger bus, not an MTD, but like a charter bus, maybe this gets parked in front of the Illini Union potentially. So what we have identified is that, you know, kind of an obvious need for just identifying, like, this is not a place to park, allowing police an ability to enforce this. And we have some ready-made signposts to put signs up there, basically just showing where the signs will go, in, with the white rectangle, and a cartoon screenshot of where they would go on this bike lane signpost. So the, and of course, and these two images are located near the Illini Union, looking east and west respectively. So the impact here, benefit of making this a tow-away zone is it would mitigate the risk of vehicle-bike crashes and higher maintenance costs caused by vehicles parked in the bike lane. It's pretty minimal cost on the city's part, just to fabricate and install ten sign panels, to go on existing posts. This ordinance would give police the ability to have a vehicle towed and impounded at the owner's expense. Now, I'll say, we recommend this be a tow-away zone because of the higher volume of traffic on this section of Green Street. If anybody's keeping score at home, they'll notice that east of Lincoln Avenue, we do currently have no parking signs posted, but there's not, it's not a tow-away zone, it's not to the same, quite to the same degree. We do have substantially more traffic west of Lincoln than we do east of Lincoln. So that was kind of our logic there. And did, I did call the, there's only three property owners along this whole stretch. Of course, it's mostly U of I, Hendrick House, and the Wesley United Methodist Church. And I was able to get ahold of two of the property owners, resounding support from them, you know, no objections from them. And I know from Facilities and Services at U of I has been beating the drum about keeping people from parking there anyway, so they're looking forward to see this become more official. So that is what I've got. Anybody have questions?
Lots of them. We'll start Mary Alice.
So since I go down Green Street pretty regularly, one of the things that I've noticed is that right, just west of Wright Street, where the border of Champaign and Urbana is, is where all the restaurants are, that's where a lot of cars are parked. I know Champaign has tried to do a variety of things to discourage people from temporarily parking there. Are they going to have something similar?
I don't know.
Okay, I was just wondering if there is some chatter about coordination?
No, this one just was kind of as obvious as, well, there was never an intention for people to park here, I just want to make sure it was communicated more clearly. But no, I did not coordinate with Champaign's staff about what they're doing on that side.
Sometimes they put up like barriers in the no-turn lane so that people couldn't park there. They've tried a variety of things.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice?
I was just wondering regarding the delivery trucks and so on and so forth, are there, are there areas on campus that specify deliveries made in back, or, or, you know, like you said, a charter bus that, I know there's a charter bus that goes up through the Union that picks kids up, takes them to Chicago or Peoria or something like that. Is there, is there something, will U of I be also putting any kind of signage up to determine and state significantly where people can go to make deliveries?
I don't know specifically. That's partially a big reason why I wanted to call Facilities and Services to ask them. I was like, is anybody rely on this? Does anybody count on this for their operations to be able to park here, even to unload? And I was told emphatically, no, at least it's not their intention that anybody should, and that people have other ways to get their deliveries or, you know, have parking. So I don't know if they're going to be doing signs for that. My understanding, they try to communicate with their vendors for that purpose.
Okay, I was just wondering, you know, how, because putting up the signs doesn't necessarily mean people are going to stop parking in that area.
Oh, for sure.
Because when you're delivering a package, it's just like bamboo, and by the time police get there, you're gone. So that's what I was wondering, if they state some kind of signage, or if there's some kind of signage-
Of course, it's mostly U of I, Hendrick House, and the Wesley United Methodist Church. I was able to get ahold of the two of the property owners, resounding support from them, you know, no objections from them. And I know from Facilities and Services at U of I has been beating the drum about keeping people from parking there anyway, so they're looking forward to see this become more official. So that is what I've got. Anybody have questions?
Lots of them. We'll start Mary Alice.
So since I go down Green Street pretty regularly, one of the things that I've noticed is that right, just west of Wright Street, where the border of Champaign and Urbana is, is where all the restaurants are, that's where a lot of cars are parked. I know Champaign has tried to do a variety of things to discourage people from, from temporarily parking there. Are they going to have something similar?
I don't know.
Okay, I was just wondering if there is some chatter about coordination?
No, this one just was kind of as obvious as, well, there was never an intention for people to park here, I just want to make sure it was communicated more clearly. But no, I did not coordinate with Champaign staff about what they're doing on that side.
I think sometimes they put up like barriers in the no-turn lane so that people couldn't park there. They've tried a variety of things.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice?
I was just wondering regarding the delivery trucks and so on and so forth, are there, are there areas on campus that specify deliveries made in back, or, or, you know, like you said, a charter bus that, I know there's a charter bus that goes up through the Union that picks kids up, takes them to Chicago or Peoria or something like that? Is there, is, is there something, will U of I be, be also putting any kind of signage up to determine and state significantly where people can go to make deliveries?
I don't know specifically. That's partially a big reason why I wanted to call Facilities and Services to ask them. I was like, does anybody rely on this? Does anybody count on this for their operations to be able to park here, even to unload? And I was told emphatically, no, at least that there, it's not their intention that anybody should, and that people have other ways to get their deliveries or, you know, have parking. So I don't know if they're going to be doing signs for that. My understanding, they try to communicate with their vendors for that purpose.
Okay, I was just wondering, you know, how, because putting up the signs doesn't necessarily mean people are going to stop parking in that area.
Oh, for sure.
Because when you're delivering a package, it's just like bamboo, and by the time police get there, you're gone. So that's what I was wondering, if they're, if they state some kind of signage, or if there's some kind of signage there, then folks, UPS or FedEx or whoever, you know, Amazon Prime will know where to go and where they need to park their vehicle, so that this will not, it won't continue to be impede on the traffic on Green Street. That's what I was wondering.
And James?
Yeah, I'll just add real quick, Illini Union and all the university buildings along that area have loading docks and places for that. And I think the Illini Union has a circle drive sufficient for a bus to pull in and turn around and pick up, so they shouldn't need to park, park there. I'm sure the MDD is going to appreciate this as well, because it could interfere with the bus lines that run through there. When this was a four-lane road, I assumed that we had no parking, but no, not the towaway zone previously.
I did.
There was no, there was no median, I mean, there's no shoulder to pull off on, and there were four lanes, two lanes each direction.
I actually did try to look back into all the, like our records of the no-parking ordinances related to Green Street. I kind of regretted doing it once I started, but it was, it was hard for me to suss out where exactly they started and stopped, because there were a lot of no-parking zones.
Well, yeah, there used to be a lot more streets there. You could drive to the North Quad on both sides of Engineering Hall. And so you could pull off there and unload and do things, but that, that's a few years ago. Okay, so I guess, we're, I was going to say something similar to what Mary Alice was hinting at. It's, it would be good if the city of Champaign would do something similar along this area, although I'm concerned that because the city of Champaign has outsourced the patrolling of the campus town area, that that's not on their plate. I don't know who's enforcing the traffic along Green Street, whether it's the U of I police and their role that they've taken on, or whether it's the Champaign police. But if there needs to be the legislative underpinnings to facilitate that, I think we should encourage them to do it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to reach out to Chris Sokolowski, their Assistant City Engineer, and update him what we're doing and see what thoughts they have, what their problems there, yeah.
Do you like a motion for the consent agenda?
Yeah.
All right, I will do this. I move with the ordinance number 2023-08-026, an ordinance amending Schedule M of Section 23-190 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, towaway zones from Green Street, from Wright Street to Lincoln Avenue, be sent to the next city council agenda on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. That ordinance number 2023-08-026, an ordinance amending Schedule M of Section 23-190 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, towaway zones, Green Street from Wright Street to Lincoln Avenue, be moved on to city council for approval on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Jaya? Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. I was glad to see this on. I think I recall BPAC talking about this for a while. I think this is great for safety. Definitely don't want bikes having to dart out into traffic because there's a truck unloading there. So I'm definitely in support of this, I'm glad to see it, and thanks for making the resolution happen. I agree, it would be great if Champaign would do the same thing, and if the U of I has better signage for where people are to park. But I think even regardless, this is important for us to do, even without that. And if it puts any of Sharice's concerns at ease, I agree with James's point that most of the buildings have loading docks and things for deliveries out back. And then also, my understanding is there's also an internal mail system, at least for us at Research Park, so it's not like there's Amazon trucks coming to buildings all over campus, it's kind of internal. So I think it makes sense to coordinate with the vendors and the people who deliver there regularly. I feel like I already should know that, and if they get towed away, they'll definitely know not to park there. So I'm in support of this, and I hope that word can spread and it can help make that corridor safer.
Jaya?
Yeah, similarly, just want to thank Traffic Commission, and especially BPAC for bringing this up. I've, I've ridden my bike along that part of Green Street and had to divert because of trucks parked, and yeah, it's scary. It's a great part of our community to be able to bike safely when it's not obstructed. So I think it's really nice to see these recommendations coming from BPAC, and very happy to support this.
Mary Alice?
Well, I was just going to thank BPAC, but since both Jaya and Grace have done that, I don't need to anymore. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Will the clerk call the row, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you so much, John. Next item is ordinance number 2023-08-027, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, modifying the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Encanto Restaurant and Bar LLC doing business as Encanto Restaurant and Bar at 115 West Main Street in Urbana.
Yes, this is an application for a liquor license for the property that formerly was the site of Crane Alley. So we're looking forward to a restaurant coming into there, and they asked for an R and T restaurant, or R and T license. This will increase the number of R and T licenses by one, and a decrease of one, actually. And then there's, anyway, it's included in the chart, in your packet.
Any question, Mary Alice?
So on the memo, it notices that there's one packaged liquor license that's declined due to non-renewal. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that, and also the R and T licenses that weren't renewed, which?
We had a decline of one overall of a packaged liquor license, that was La Moronita, back store closed. And then for the two R and T licenses, Baldurata's chose not to renew their license, and Best of Africa's license was not renewed for, for at least six months. Thank you.
James, did you have a hand?
Yeah, just real quick, two questions. One is, had Crane Alley's license already gone away?
The license doesn't, the license is attached to the current owner, so.
I understand, so.
So when they go out of business, it's.
So it had already been removed from the list?
Yes.
And then, do we have an opening date?
We don't.
Okay, thank you.
But it's always good to get the license in advance, and so we're glad that they've applied for it. So they'll be ready to go when they get the final permits from Public Health and everything else they need to do.
Grace, did you? Any, any other questions for the liquor guru? I can't remember what the name, commissioner. I appreciate having the list of, of businesses and their types of licenses, so thank you for including that.
Yeah, and this is up to date, as of tonight, so.
Mary Alice?
Can I do four for four tonight?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to move something to the consent agenda on the next city council's agenda, ordinance number 2023-08-027, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, modifying the number of Class R and T-1 licenses for Encanto Restaurant and Bar LLC, DBA, Encanto Restaurant and Bar at 115 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. That ordinance number 2023-08-027, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, modifying the number of Class R and T liquor licenses for Encanto Restaurant and Bar LLC doing business as Encanto Restaurant and Bar at 115 West Main Street in Urbana, be moved on to city council for approval on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is council input and communication. Yes, Chris?
Thank you. I want to remind residents again in Ward 2 that we are going to have a community meeting at the Phillips Recreation Center about the Mid Barrier Homeless Shelter that CU at Home proposes at Port 10 West Springfield Avenue. And we're going to have a community meeting. Staff of CU at Home will be there to answer questions and hear concerns and comments. Everyone is invited. It is at the Phillips Recreation Center, 505 West Stoughton Street, Thursday, August 17th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's Thursday, August 17th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I want to thank the community development staff headed by Kimberly Smith, and especially Beldon Belcher for doing the crackerjack job of getting the Phillips Recreation Center secured and printing out and designing the flyers. So like we like to say at my house, the community development staff is now eligible for ice cream.
Grace?
Thank you. Just want to say that I'm looking forward to the presentation on the use-of-force review when that gets rescheduled. And then also hoping, and we'll try and follow up on getting an update on some of the police policies that were revised and updated. I don't know exactly what they are, to know the internal nature of them, but I tend to think that the public is and should be involved in police policies, and they have the right to at least know about any changes. I think even more so, it's even better for the public to have a say in those policies, including the council. Again, just an idea I've brought up before, I think it would be great to have more involvement in changing policies when it comes to the police department, to have the council and the public involved, let alone informed on those kinds of things. So I look forward to that, and I'll try and keep following up. Thank you.
And I'll just highlight that the waitlist, the Housing Choice Voucher Program waitlist opened today and will be open until August 11th at 11:59. Eligible applicants received through the website will be entered into the lottery, where all names will be randomly sorted, and a thousand names will be selected for placement on the waiting list. So there is a website that you can go to on the, at the Housing Authority to apply for that waitlist. So if, if that, if that is you, then go ahead and do that, since the waitlist doesn't open very often. And that's all I have to say. Anything else from fellow council members? Okay, with nothing else before this committee of the whole, we are adjourned.